Good evening. Welcome to Littleton School Committee Meeting on December 4th. Good. Two days before the big game, one day before the big play. It's all good. Alex, will you do some pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. All right. So for the consent agenda, we have before us the minutes from November 20th and vote to pay bills and payroll. Make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Motion made. Soon to be seconded.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain from the vote because I wasn't here.
I also wasn't here, but I'll second.
Yes. And you can vote on it as well.
I'll vote on it, yeah. If Darrell thinks it's okay, I think it's okay.
On this. It's been moved and seconded?
Aye.
Not sure which one of them is seconded, but you just...
Yeah.
Was there any discussion before we think about? Any discussion? I didn't see that. Okay. Paul, is it in favor of consent agenda? Is anyone kind of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Interested citizens. If there are any interested citizens, you can come forward, go to the microphone, introduce yourself and your address.
You better scan the crowd.
Plays better on TV when you do it that way.
You sure right in the back there, there wasn't somebody?
I thought they were getting off of the... Probably positioning. All right, for recognition?
Sure.
Turn it over to the superintendent.
If you followed me on my Twitter account this week, you will have had some great action shots. The Secretary of Education's visit to Littleton High School. We had a great visit. Our student council acted as ambassadors for the school and toured Matt Malone around our school. So it was a great time. I'd like to thank Mike and Alex for coming out and join us, joining us that morning and representing the school committee. I sent out a press release that you all received, and there was a quote from Secretary of Education Matt Malone that I'd like to read to you. If I can find the right one. "I was very impressed with my visit to Littleton High School. There was 100% engagement in every room I saw during my tour. Interactive collaboration between students and teachers and the hands-on learning being practiced is an excellent example of why Littleton High School is so successful." So Secretary Malone was impressed with what he saw. Our students and staff were great. They were anxious to show everybody that was in the room all the good things that were happening, and it was a very proud moment for all of us. Secretary Malone did show off a little bit in the weight room and benched over 200 pounds, and Alex held me back from not trying to himself.
Having fun, Alex?
He wanted to make sure that he managed to get it to the end of the day. It wasn't in the hospital, so it was great. Always a good opportunity to have somebody in that ranking position come and visit us.
Awesome.
Fantastic. Item two, Hour of Code. Can't believe it's here again. Week of December 8th to 14th. We have a number of teachers in classrooms taking part in it. I have a short video that I'd like to show you tonight that illustrates how code.org has taken off worldwide. It truly is an example of how creativity and perseverance and great ideas can be contagious not only within our nation but beyond. Steve?
The Hour of Code. This is so cool.
Hour of Code.
The Hour of Code.
Their program is called.
Nacho.
Your teacher says you guys are into it.
We are. It's very awesome.
Code.org has partnered with 30 public school districts across the country, including New York, Chicago, and Denver, to provide lessons and teacher training and writing
the largest education events in history.
We're gonna set what they call an ambitious goal of reaching 10 million students this year. Almost 15 million signed up.
This week, I'm proud to join the students, teachers, businesses, and nonprofit organizations taking new steps to support computer science in American schools.
They've been so excited about it.
You're learning again your part.
I got it.
I ran an hour code that's easy to do.
They're learning how things are created in a technological world, and that's their world and their upcoming world.
Every district should do. Every district can do it.
I'm actually seeing the kids at elementary school start coding, and this is amazing.
I love it. Every single country.
Love it?
Yes, I love it.
Yes.
If you can change technology, you can change the world.
I challenge girls in every single country to learn One Hour of Code.
Computer science can unlock the best opportunities in the world no matter where you are. Please help us get the Hour of Code to 100 million students this year.
And my school's doing it.
So as you recall, last year, we signed on with code.org, and next year, because there was a delay in unit development, our middle school will be embracing the concept within math and science. This year, we added a computer science class to the high school, being taught by Kelly Ogden. Next year, we'll be adding an AP computing science class, so we're well on our way. I'm also very excited that with our new network at Shaker Lane, we have a number of Shaker Lane teachers taking part in code.org next week with their students, so we're set up well for success. As the chairman already mentioned, we have a great weekend of events. Our high school football game, final game, is on Saturday, starting at 9:00 AM at Gillette. From what I understand, make sure you bring an umbrella or something to keep the rain off you, but that certainly won't deter people from coming out and watching a fantastic game. We're playing the same team that we played last year, Cohasset, and it'll be a great game. We also have a high school play this weekend, the mystery of Edwin Drood, playing Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday and Saturday at 7:30, Sunday, I believe, is at 3:00.
Correct.
Always a great time to come out and watch some great theater. Really nice about what we do in Littleton is we have a lot of talented kids and staff, and we actually have live music instead of recorded music with the play, and that takes a lot to do, so very fortunate to have that talent on staff and in our student body. A couple of other acknowledgements, if you wouldn't mind. Our Holiday Helper program, as you all know, is underway. It's sponsored by our rec department. Since 2009, the numbers are up by 300%. So this year, we've noticed another increase. There are increased families that are in need at this time of year. If you are able to, we would certainly appreciate you coming out down and taking an ornament off the holiday tree, one of the holiday trees of the rec department, and the rec department's located in the same building as the education department. Would be my wish that every child has something under the tree this year for the holiday season. So last acknowledgement goes to the Littleton Fire Department, who stepped up to the plate and on Wednesday were at Littleton High School and trained our staff in CPR and EID device. And I can't tell you how much that means to me as a superintendent, having more staff trained in case they ever have to use CPR or the device. I'd like to see all of our staff trained in the next four years anyway. That would be my dream, so to speak. As a superintendent and as a principal, I've been in districts where staff have actually saved students' lives as a result of having to train, so it's a great thing to have, and it's really good to have our fire department so actively involved with the school district in providing that training. And that's it for my acknowledgements.
Great. Just to kind of make a comment relative to the fire department's training and the EID training, there's a parent in Littleton that has asked about when the fields are in use, where are the closest devices? I'm embarrassed to say I don't know where it is, because I'm out of those fields every weekend, and wondered if there would be an opportunity, which he semi-volunteered, which I think I can make that push, to kind of spearhead, to have one somewhere outside. Maybe like on a wheeled cart or something like that, that somebody could just run up to the field. We do for the high school. Outside. Yeah, that might, during the practices for the fall and spring, on the golf cart. There is one on that? Okay, great. Great. What about, not that it's a school responsibility, but maybe if there's an opportunity to put one somewhere outside, almost like in case of emergency break last night, something somewhere outside.
Do they have those? Seems like a thing that they should have.
I don't think there is anything, Michael, currently, because he's looked into it somewhat, and not that there might be, he's kind of designed a prototype, so.
We'll certainly be interested in looking at it.
Yeah, for youth programs, it would be important.
And we've come a long way in five years in terms of being able to afford purchasing them, a number of them, and, you know, first of all, we want to keep them safe and secure, but as we evolve through time, it's not a bad idea. We just have to figure out how we could, we could do something like that and keep it safe and make sure that it's not easily accessed.
So has Park and Rec looked at it in terms of all of their youth programs, though? Because I mean, only a subset of them are actually held at the school.
True.
Or at a school.
Right. At the end of the conversation, I need you to continue, and as the liaison through the Park and Rec, I'll start the conversation with them and with the youth programs, see if there is some opportunity for us to collaborate with them, because it will be on our property in most instances. That's what the fields are. A mobile one would be good. One that could be in a bag rather than, say, assigned to an outside area, you know, that would be on the wall outside. And it's this kind of unwritten site administrator at each rec event on the weekends is kind of, is usually somebody that's the go-to person. Bag, yes. So maybe, yeah.
Have a responsible adult or whatever who would take it. Now, are they comfortable with the access they have when they're in our buildings?
I haven't heard otherwise.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that question. It's important that they know where they are and how to access them if necessary.
I think they're outside. Close to the field that's on the wall, is outside cafeteria. Rossuma Gym, yeah. Right. And then it's in the, outside of the K auditorium at the middle school, there's one in that lobby as well.
Okay. You want to, Shaker Lane, right in the foyer?
It's right, almost right outside the gym door.
Yes. Russell, same spot.
Lobby and out by the gym.
Gym cafeteria, yeah.
It's amazing when you think about it. Five years ago, we, I think we had one in the whole district, and now we're looking at a couple for schools, so that's great.
There it is. So, sorry to derail us. Michael would be mad at me for getting off schedule. I think we'll move right along to the presentations, the high school presentation.
Can I jump in real quick?
I'm sorry, yeah.
There's also the Holiday Bazaar on Saturday. For those of you who are either coming back from, hopefully after a decisive victory, but, you know, we'll see, or who aren't able to make it, I know that the engineering club at the high school, and I think probably a couple of other school groups have been trying to sell some wares ahead of the holiday season. The Secretary of Ed, when he was visiting the high school the other day, he was looking at some of the neat little gadgets.
Bots.
Yeah, the little bots that they've been working on. They've been printing out chess boards and lots of stuff to buy and support the engineering club and the other student groups in schools, so.
We now have a laser cutter or engraver that'll be displaying at the bazaar also, so.
Yeah, it's a great community event. All the organizations in town, whether they be school, you know, each class comes out and tries to sell some wares, whether it's sweatshirts or license plate holders or cups or whatever, try to raise money for their class. Good stuff.
Mike used to do it.
Krispy Kreme doughnuts. Somebody used to sell. Those were the big attractive.
All the youth programs are out there and the garden club, and it's a great community event.
And Sunday is the Christmas tree lighting, so busy weekend.
3:00 PM?
3:00 PM.
4:00 PM. 4:00 PM. It's dusk.
Yes.
We gotta work on that conflict with the, every year, the musical and the tree lighting are overlapping.
Yes.
Simultaneous. They did that for you. Because that was my Canadian.
Well done.
All right, so we can move on here, right? Couple minutes ahead. The LHS presentation on alternative credits for PE. We have a guest.
Actually, co-presenter, I guess, well, we welcome back Mrs. Perry, and she's our wellness coordinator for the, actually for the district, right? Pre-K to 12 position, and as well as a physical education teacher at the high school and health teacher. And so what you're going to see tonight, or hear tonight, is a proposal, really two proposals that are in tandem, for increasing graduation requirements for physical education at the high school. Mrs. Perry and Mr. Lynn have collaborated with me on reviewing this over a series of months, and also in consultation with the Department of Ed, superintendent, various other folks. And this is really stemming from lots of discussions over the years, but really culminated with the recent coordinated program review that we had, and Dr. Detweiler has already presented on that. But as you know, we are required to be compliant with the state. We are out of compliance with physical education requirements. The state mandates that physical education be taught every year. They're not specific on the timeframe in terms of how many hours specifically for physical education, that it has to be a term or semester or a year-long course, but they do say that it has to be taught every year. That's in the statute. So what we're proposing to you tonight is something that will help us meet that requirement and also provide an opportunity for students to meet that requirement in a unique way, in a way that's flexible, we think creative, and allows students lots of opportunities to engage in physical activities that are healthy and help promoting our mission as a school and as a school district, but also allowing us to meet the mandate. So without further ado, I'm just gonna go to the slide here. If you could just... We'd like to begin this requirement, we'd like to do it in a phased-in way with the class of 2018. We originally proposed to the Department of Ed that we, or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as it's known today, that we would start this with the class of 2019, the current eighth grade, so it would be easier for us as a school to schedule. We got feedback, I worked with Dr. Detweiler on this and the Program Quality Assurance Service, PQA, to review this, and they insisted that we start now. And so therefore, we're going to do that. And with the class 2018, we propose to you that Littleton High School students will be required to fulfill a physical education requirement. You'll see a hybrid name, sort of, physical education slash health and wellness credit, because it's worded different ways, both in the statute and in our program of studies and in our policy, so we wanted to make sure everybody understood we're talking about the same thing. That's why you'll see that sort of long verbiage related to the credit requirement. But basically, it's every school year, if you could just go back for a second.
Oops, sorry.
I'll be, I'll go through this. Requirement each year, total of 12.5, 2.5 each year, and then, you know, a health requirement of 12.5 credits that we currently have to meet the graduation requirements. And then we'll go to the next slide. If you want to chime in, I'm happy to.
Turn over the microphone now.
Basically, what we wanted would be ideal situation. The students would take one PE course, and I say that very loosely, because we do have different types of courses, but a PE course, an activity course, once per year, so it's one semester. With that being said, there are a lot of students, and if we increase that, our numbers are gonna increase even more, and frankly, we already have a large number of students in most of our classes. So I think I'm jumping up ahead a little bit, but...
That's okay. But we have, you might want to mention that we have 1.6 teachers total, really.
We do.
Talk about what your course load is like.
Technically, currently at the high school, we only have a .9 phys ed teacher. Mike Lynn is .6, because he's also the athletic director, and I only actually teach .3, because I have three sections out of the whole year, so my 10 courses that I teach, five per semester. So currently, we don't even have a full-time PE teacher at the high school, because I do also teach several sections of health, as well as our child development and nutrition courses up at the high school.
So that sort of, Bill, that sort of gives you a little preview ahead, a few slides of what, when we get to how we're gonna fulfill this mandate. It is a challenge, and that's why you see two proposals in tandem. One, because it's really at the request of lots of parents and students to have some flexibility anyway with physical education requirements, and the other part is that we really want to do it in a fiscally responsible way that's manageable within the overall budget. And the alternative credit option that you'll hear about in a short, in just a minute or so, allows us to do that with a limited number of staff. So thank you, Meredith, for sharing that. We do this, we propose this new graduation requirement of 12.5 credits, four years, in a phased-in manner, and what we'd like to do is I'll just skip ahead there, besides for the reason, if you could just skip ahead to a slide, one more, please. The timeline, it starts with December 4th. December 4th, you know, that's, we're there to, we're here tonight, proposing to you, the school committee to review the proposal, and then in the winter, this would require revisions to existing policies, the way I look at it at a glance. Certainly is a policy that stipulates what the graduation requirements are, and then we, in turn, would look at that and make the adjustments in our program of studies. And then, if we could just go ahead a little bit, per the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the increase in credits required, again, we start with the freshmen, and then our second proposal for the alternative credit option will allow us to meet that. Steven at the top, the 2015-16 school year? All right, thank you. The increased credit requirement of 12.5 credits would apply to sophomores and freshmen next year, so we're phasing this in, and then the following year, we would apply it to juniors, sophomores, and freshmen, and then by 2017, 2018, we would have full compliance. That phased-in approach is very much on purpose, because we need to gauge how we would manage the staffing around this, and the class sizes, and the facility usage. How would we, how many people would actually be, need to be taught phys ed at different points during the day, and to put two, three main spaces in the building right now. We do think, again, with our in-tandem proposal, that we'll be able to manage this, because we have such a high percentage of students who participate in athletics and other vigorous physical activities outside of school. We do think, again, with our in-tandem proposal, that we'll be able to manage this, because we have such a high percentage of students who participate in athletics and other vigorous physical activities outside of school. I think you had a chance to look at the reasons for the proposals already, I think we covered that slide. It was a little out of sequence, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. And then I'll go to the budget implication slide, it's really simple. And Meredith, you started to talk a little bit about this.
I'm a little excited.
No, no, but it's the part that is really, it's something the school committee would certainly want to hear when it comes to resources, what we might need to do. We're not sure, I had a conversation with Superintendent just this afternoon about that, how would we manage this? And we're not sure exactly in terms of the overall, long-term, what percentage of FTE, of full-time equivalent position, we would need to add. We're projecting initially probably a .6 position, a half-time position, possibly a .4 part-time position for next year. Of course, we would love to have a full-time position, but that, we know that there's a lot of other competing interests, including that the high school and other departments for staffing, and that there are limited funds for that. So if I could go to the second proposal, unless there, I don't know if the chairman had any questions at this point, or should I just go ahead? Should I just continue with the second?
You started this one, I'll let you finish, I'll come in behind you after that.
Are we okay to go to the second proposal?
You guys have any comments at this point?
Nope.
We can talk about them at the end.
Yeah, maybe we can just do it.
All right, this proposal, you can stay up there.
Dismissed.
We'll handle the questions together. All right. This proposal, though, for an alternative credit option, is a direct response, and some of those parents are here tonight. I've had conversations over the last two years with two of the parents in the audience tonight about this option, and that would provide flexibility. Again, as I've said, a large percentage of our student population participates in activities outside of the school day, and a lot of them are athletes. They're part of LHS seasonal sports, and we think that that, giving them an option to allow, the school committee allowing them to have, take that for credit, would be wonderful for students. It's certainly a high demand. Again, and it would allow them to take courses that they might prefer to take during the school week, too. The alternative credit option for physical education credit must meet the following criteria. There's very specific stipulations that we put in, and we shared this with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so they would know that it was going to be structured learning time. That there would be something that wasn't just a flimsy, oh, you're playing a sport and, okay, check the box. We wanted to have something of substance to it. And so what we will do is we'll have to create a, we'll create it, we'll streamline it, we'll make it sure it's simple and manageable. But we will have some type of assessment as part of a student's participation, and even an LHS sport that would need to be completed by a coach at the high school, if they're in a high school sport, or an outside, say they're involved in a karate activity, or figure skating, or gymnastics, that's not associated with the high school. Something, there are a lot of students that do that. A lot of students actually participate in dance, and that's incredibly, you know, rigorous or vigorous in terms of the activity, sometimes two hours a night. And so we would want students to be able to get, earn credit for that. The specifics also say that there would be an assigned and qualified instructor. The duration of the alternate activity or sport must be the length of a high school sport, 12 to 16 weeks for a non-school-related physical activity. And that there would be some type of assessment that I would develop, actually, it really would be the physical education instructors who would develop it, and then we would approve it as an administration. And we want to keep it simple, so that it doesn't create too much paperwork for the staff involved. Again, benefits, if we could go to the benefits of the alternative credit option. It allows schedule flexibility for students experiencing schedule constraints. Sometimes students have a physical education requirement up against a course that they really want to take that's part of their future college study. I had a principal's coffee this morning with parents, and I had that feedback for sure, that students were sometimes constrained and had to take the physical education course because they had to make the graduation requirement, and they had to do it during the school day, where they would rather have some flexibility if they were a cross-country team or something, to be able to take that for credit. So it appeals to students seeking to enroll in additional academic courses, and it helps students who prefer or need something different from a traditional PE course. We know that there are some students who are just very uncomfortable taking a physical education course during the school day, and would prefer another option outside of school. But it also, this alternative credit option, the bottom line is though, and I think Meredith would agree, and certainly Mike would as well, it shows we value health and wellness for all students. And then lastly, last slide, the alternative credit option for physical educations would be available to all students and effective immediately upon the vote of the approval of the school committee. We want to be able to initiate that right away. So currently, our 10th, 11th, and 12th grade would be exempt from the increased graduation requirement, that's a thing they want to take away from. But they would be able to use this option now. That's, you know, if a 10th grader or 11th grader still has an outstanding credit requirement to meet, they wouldn't be compelled to necessarily have to meet it at the high school, in taking a high school phys ed course. They could now use their spring lacrosse to meet that requirement. So that was an important distinction I wanted to make sure you were aware of. Although the increased credit requirements, 12.5, wouldn't apply for them, those students who still had the 7.5 credit requirement could use this option this year. And we think that's, it's a nice approach, very responsive to parent and student requests. That about summarizes the two proposals.
By allowing the upperclassmen to try to use this credit option, it allows us to kind of get out all the kinks and the hiccups, so we can kind of work along with that as well.
Yeah, learn from it.
Thank you for the presentation, and I'm sure we probably have a few questions. Just a couple of comments. The presentation made this process look easy, and it definitely wasn't easy. Those of you that are involved in education are fully aware of the stringent certification requirements before you're even allowed to teach a class. And we were able to work with our local educators association, and, you know, with some assurance, we're doing this with some stringent guidelines in terms of expectations for students and coaches when we award credits of this nature. We also had a very big snag in terms of whether we could do this and actually charge fees as well. And in the end, through a number of meetings with legal counsel, we were able to get some assurance from the Department of Education. It was nice that we had started this process prior to our CPR report, and that certainly allowed us to come up with a plan that was well thought out. I'm actually excited about this, because we're very fortunate, we have strong, a strong variety of programs within our community that our students are taking part in, and we have great participation rates. Another advantage to this option or way of doing business is we're not giving students time off, so to speak. They will still be required to take courses during their regular day, and it will give them an opportunity to have more courses prior to their graduation.
Just comment on that. One of the potential unintended consequences of this, but could be, it's not a bad one, but it's something for us to consider, is as we allow students to take other courses, down the road, we may have an increased demand for elective courses at the high school, as we have more students participating in, you know, using their after-school sport or physical activity, whatever that might be. For credit, we may have increased demand on, say, our social studies department, that's down the road. That's something we could sort of forecast out into the future years. You could also see it in other departments, though, in our, where students would want to take more classes, or, you know, and we would have to monitor those class sizes as we, because students would be freed up and available to take them. So we're going to have to be careful as we watch that. And that's why the phased-in approach is very deliberate, and needs to be there. And we're grateful for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for allowing us to do this phased-in approach, rather than all of a sudden dropping a hammer on a mandate, an unfunded mandate, on us and having to do it all in one full swoop, and give it the air, that would be really difficult to manage.
Meredith, do you feel comfortable with the approach?
I fully support the proposals. Something that, just a scheduling conflict, most of the PE classes are in the morning, and so aren't the AP classes. So, a lot of students were having to choose between, oh, graduation requirement or an AP course, and it's just not fair for them to have to do that.
Thank you. You can take off now. You got the big seat.
All right.
Alex?
Thank you. I saw this from the very early stages before the CPR, and I know when Kelly said it looks, this presentation made it look easy, I sort of laughed a little bit, because this was one of the most involved policy changes I think we've seen in a long time, in terms of the breadth of our organization that this hit.
This is a big deal.
Very big deal. The school council, I know we have at least one representative, two? One or two?
Two.
Two.
Well, I wasn't on it during that time.
Okay. Well, we have two current school council members who are very active in this and other issues. And I know that's always a, you know, it can be a headache when you're running into so many different speed bumps, and we were able to overcome them all, whether it was the fees, working with legal counsel, making sure that our educators are on board, and I really like this deliberate approach. And I was surprised tonight, I was, I've been harassing Kelly for the past couple of weeks, trying to get more information, because I'm so excited about this. And I was surprised to learn that we're actually offering that we might be able to do this this year. That's incredible. That says a lot. And we talked a lot about trying to instill in our students the ability to take something that seems negative and turn it into a positive, and sort of persevere and to think on your feet. And we were working on this before the CPR came around, but when the CPR said, hey, we're not in compliance on PE, we instantly shifted and said, well, actually, we can turn this around and do just what we're trying to teach our students to do.
Right.
And so that, I think, is, the importance of that cannot be understated. And this will, this is great for a huge variety of reasons that you spoke of, that Kelly spoke of, and that Mrs. Perry spoke about. But just the amount of teamwork that went into this, and the ingenuity and the creativity, and trying to think outside the box, this is exactly what 21st century learning should be about.
It was a very collaborative effort, too, across the board, with parents, administrators, attorneys, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, school council, faculty, curriculum coordinator. We had lots of input from different folks. So I think that makes it even a better proposal in the end, where we really thought this through and had it looked at by lots of eyes prior to bringing it to you tonight.
Great job. And I'd also say that in regards to the budget implications, if we weren't to take this approach, the budget ask would be much bigger. And so this is not only a great, educationally, it makes sense 110%, but fiscally, it makes sense as well. And I think anyone who, you know, sometimes a school district is criticized because we're just this large line item that this town sees, and they're wondering, well, what are we doing to cut costs? This is, this was a huge undertaking, and it's going to save a lot of money in the long run. And in addition to being a great educational achievement for our school districts. So it's a win-win. So, great job, everyone.
Thanks, Principal Harrington, and Mrs. Perry. Sorry for, I want to call you Ms. Miller every time she leaves.
I'm still calling you Ms. Miller.
Okay. I think I did the other day, I thought.
You did, it's fine.
I think, I mean, I'm completely supportive of this. I've always said that extracurricular-type activities, non-classroom activities, are probably just as good a learning experience for people, if not more, and I don't think, I think athletics are no exception to that, so. I think you'll probably, you spoke to the increased participation in electives, but I think you'll probably see an increase in athletic team sizes, probably, I would think, through this. Some people who aren't doing athletics might choose to do this in order to free up that extra space.
Yeah, that's true.
So we'll probably have increased sizes there, which I think is probably a good thing. I had a question, though. Is this a once-a-year thing, or would a freshman be able to use this all four years that they're there? Would they be able to get credits for?
You can only use the alternative credit option once a year, but you could meet your full four-year requirement each year by taking this option.
Right, so you can use it once per year.
Right, you could earn all 10 credits for the physical activity courses through this option.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think, I'm completely supportive of it.
The one important thing I would add, though, is it did come up in our process of discussing with school council and some parents. Some folks wanted to know, well, couldn't a student just, you know, get, the expression was, couldn't they just bang out three, you know, three years' worth in three seasons? It doesn't work that way. It's every year, it has to by the mandate. And so it's 2.5 credits per year. So that's an important thing for folks. That, I do expect to get that question from folks, trying to get two years done in one year, or three years done in one year.
Yeah, thanks for, I wasn't a part of this board when most of this work was being done, so appreciate the effort.
Same. Thank you very much for all the effort, for, you know, everybody that was involved, but you guys are here now, so you get most of the credit. Oftentimes, I'll talk about collaboration, and John, I don't know how many times I've said to you, hey, the Shrewsbury elementary schools are doing great in MCAS, find out what they're doing, and you know, so it is, I, I think that you guys looked at a lot of different things. I know with the ISL, like Lawrence Academy, Grattan School, friends of ours that go there, they're required to take,
That's right.
play a sport, and that meets their PE requirements. So I think it's great that, you know, you guys looked outside the box, came up with a solution, a couple of alternatives, and are putting forth something that's meeting the kids where they are, and giving them an opportunity, if somebody wants to take an AP class, AP fitness, is that available yet?
We pretend it is.
I know somebody is. But I think it's great that, you know, it's creative, it's collaborative, and my hat's off to everybody involved, and I think it's, we can learn from this process, other, you know, how to solve other issues and solutions that may arise in the future. Thanks a lot, guys.
Oh, sure. Now, if I have a couple of questions, I.
I have questions, too.
All right. I'm going to start with my questions, and then praise you for the great work that you did here. One, I'm, when we did policy IKF review a couple of years ago, and we brought the program of studies and reconciled it, I went to like about 15 other districts and looked, and we had the most in terms of phys ed health requirements to date, and we upped the requirements to our, what we thought was enough to meet the state requirement. What are all these other schools going to do? Because even today, they're not offering, you know, as a graduation requirement this here. But anyway, that's a sort of random thing there. So, you mentioned that you'll allow outside activities, such as dance. Are you going to set requirements for how many times a week they meet for that? So like park and rec, which does once a week, maybe one practice, is that going to qualify? Or is it like, those high school sports are five days a week, practice and events. What's, what are you going to use for a benchmark to make sure that the, there's an equivalent amount of activity?
We get into the nitty-gritty of the procedural aspects of it, we're going to have to have discussions and work that out. We didn't want to get too far into the weeds with that, because that was something where, you know, sometimes it's not part of the mandate, it doesn't stipulate the number of hours. So if, for some students, that works to take, they go to dance for two hours or four hours a week, and it's not every day for 40, five days a week, for 45 or 49 minutes at the high school like we would have. We're going to have some flexibility there with students and work with families on that. There are some situations where students go to an event twice a week, but it's so significant to them that it would be worth it in terms of overall hours. We're not, we're not necessarily equating this with the hour piece.
I guess that would be just one thing, that I think it opens up a big gray area.
Yeah.
And I'd like to make sure that we, as we work down that, that it's very clear to parents, what are the parameters that we're looking at for their.
Just to add to that, from my experience with classes such as karate or even dance, their season, quote unquote, is September to June, where soccer season is September and October, maybe November if we're lucky. So I think that taking, looking at that whole aspect, even if it is once a week for two hours, they do that for 10 months or so. So I think that, that in total, so perhaps they wouldn't be able to get the credits until June, where the athlete would get them at the end of the season, or during that semester.
And one of the simple solutions would be just to use our current bell schedule, 50 minutes a week, and just say, you know, it has to equal a certain number of minutes or hours over a course of the 12 to 16-week period, but not confine it to the week, but spread it out over time. So that's something we're.
There's a lot of variability. Once you start opening it up to outside activities, which are not under control of the school, it just introduces.
It might require some tightening up as we go along and learn from the experience.
The other thing comes to credits. So, just when we did the revision, we added the four-year math requirement, we upped the requirements to, I think it's 116 credits to graduate. This is going to bump it up to 121 there. Are we starting to run out of time? What, have we looked at the impact of, you know, the number of required courses and the flexibility that's there on it? Because I think we were starting to tighten it up quite a bit when we went to the, added the four-year math requirement, which added more credit time, required credit time. the four-year math requirement, which added more credit time, required credit time. So I'd just like to maybe have you address that part also.
When, when we looked at this, and that's a great question, we, we don't have any immediate concerns as a result of the way credits were being offered. If, if we were trying to compress more into the school day, then that would be a factor that, that we really need to look at, but, you know, from, from what we've, we've considered when we're figuring out this proposal, we don't feel that it will be an issue at this point in time. The elective issue is, is something that is not only intriguing, but perhaps a little concerning. I've always said to you, as your superintendent, high school, like any school, has its limitations. We, we are required to prepare students to continue their educational journey. Their educational journey shouldn't end with us, so I don't feel, for example, we should be having students graduating with two years of college under their belt either. So there is that, that balance that we need to, to stay within, I guess, reasonable expectations for what high school should be doing.
Right. Because my concern comes not necessarily for the kids, the students that will take, use the alternative credit option there. I think there'll still be plenty of hours in the day to get, you know, all the credits. It's the ones that don't take that are not participating in sports, which so they'll, they'll actually have five additional credit hours of, during the day coursework to do than others. I just want to make sure that we don't miss the mark in terms of where we're, you know, because you're going to, you're going to ask me to up the credit sitting in the policy to 121 and I just like to make sure we've done, taken into account the case of.
Daryl, they're going to ask us to up it, okay buddy?
Well, first he's going to ask me to change the policy.
My policy!
I have to edit the policy, so that's my change. But anyway.
That was a lot.
But anyway, just, just, just like to make sure we take that into account, that, that we look at both cases, the student that doesn't participate and what that has an impact on their schedule.
Just to add to that, currently we, I would say it's mandatory for all students to carry 30 credits a year and they're having, they're having trouble finding electives to choose, so some of them are just kind of, oh, I'll TA. And so some of the teacher assistants are fantastic, but some of them aren't.
They're learning, they're still learning how to take advantage of the opportunity.
Exactly. So with this up requirement, if they are, you know, supposed to carry, carry 30 credits per year, then that's 120 plus the one credit for community service, that's 121.
And, you know, don't, don't take my questions as one that is not supportive of this proposal because I think this is a great initiative here. It provides a lot of different flexibility. I just want to make sure as we get to the implementation phase and the policy implications of that, that we don't end up having a negative consequence through just a.
And with our current schedule, it still allows for one study period.
Right.
Because 35 credits is the maximum.
It's two and a half credits per, you know, roughly, if a student could meet it in a semester, say for, if we think of it, they're already sort of required to do it, we kind of try to put it in the freshman and sophomore year to meet the, the seven and a half credits that are currently in the way. But now say they have to take, there might be some students who want to, they choose to take their courses during the school day, the phys ed courses. You know, two and a half credits in a junior year added to a junior year schedule, two and a half credits added to a senior year schedule is quite manageable for those kids who we, we project out, who might opt to do that. We think they can absorb it within their schedule and that's, well, we have to prepare for that and that's why we did want to mention that we may need additional physical activity teachers or sections rather, potentially three, two to four, but certainly two to three sections over time as we go forward, probably as soon as next year if, if students don't opt into the, don't opt for the alternative credit option as much as we, we project.
And, you know, Daryl, it's a, it's a good point. When I look at our, our current requirements, we have 22 and a half credits for electives. Closest core course to that is 20 credits in math, 20 credits in English, 12 and a half. So, you know, if we find over time that, that it becomes somewhat problematic, that would probably be the only area that we could reconsider. But again, because we're, we're expecting our students to be enrolled in classes during the day and then not free up time during the day as a result of the selective phys ed credit, they're going to have those credits anyway.
If I may, I think, I definitely see the concern, whether we adopt this policy or not, that will be an issue because we'll be needing to up that, that requirement regardless of how we, how we approach the alternative credit option because of the CPR and DESE. So while this might only help some of the students with that.
The reason I bring it up is, is there's two ways we can address it. One is upping our graduation requirement credits or reducing, you know, I think the state, there's a lower limit on the 22, which is, I think is like 19 or something like that. We can, we, we have different flexibility.
Oh, right.
Versus just changing, upping the hours. I just want to make sure before we, or as we up the hours, we haven't had unintended consequences.
And I'd just add that the school committee has lots of latitude of discretion, you know, certainly to reduce elective credits and to keep it consistent with surrounding schools, to make a school day manageable for a student. Because the last thing we want to do is add to the stress level for parents and students as they try to go through course selection. So I appreciate you saying that.
When you've calculated the increase in, in class options that you might need to offer, have you thought about, have you done the calculations thinking like, like I was a student who, I think I took phys ed probably all four years, so, but I would have been one of those people who would have elected to do varsity sports, so I probably would have left one of my seeds in the, in the, during the class, during the school day and done it during athletics after school. So have you done that calculation? There probably a number of people would do that in order to free up.
It's hard to, that's a projection.
Yeah.
So that's why the phasing really helped us.
And it's really hard too because most of the students who are taking it as an elective are the athletes because Mr. Lynn has the great strength and conditioning program that he has right now.
Yeah.
And so they all want to get in there and get stronger and faster. So that's something that, that as a department, we take pride in and we would hope that all the athletes wouldn't leave, but.
We don't expect that, actually.
We don't, I don't expect that.
I'm sure you'll, I'm sure you'll find out quickly though.
Right, which is, which is why I fully support this too, because the, the students want to be in there and, and most of them either can't get in due to other conflicts or it's just not offered in the time that it's available for them.
And that, that did come up, then a number of students love physical education during school day. It's one of their favorite classes, so they will, they will take it all four years, they will take it for credit and that's just fine and they'll be three-season athletes.
Actually, the first question I have kind of goes towards that, even though we don't expect it to happen, and I agree with you, knowing the people I know, go to my house, but, and if this got answered, I, I don't think I heard, but I'll ask you, is it conceivable though that a student could choose to not take any in-school PE or wellness classes and meet the requirement?
They would have to take health.
So they have to take health, okay. So that's fine, so they will meet.
That's a classroom setting, it's not the activity.
So the only thing that they could conceivably avoid is a fitness PE type class, which, that's fine. That, that's which is my concern because I didn't want them to miss out on some legitimate curriculum.
Nope.
That we think has value, just because they just want to play ball full-time, which is what I wanted to do, but nobody.
And there's no benefit to that, having one actual in, during the school, our PE class? Like, is there something that would be missed by?
Well, it would be available for students if they wanted to do it, you know, they, they could use the alternative credit option every year, but they, they can't apply that to health. You know, certainly is a benefit to, we would encourage students to take physical education, but we want them to, and that's why we want, we can't, that's why we're putting in a four year requirement, so there's no way that they're going to escape it in a few years. They're going to have to take.
Like I said, I think that would be the exception. I think most of the kids are just going to say, this just helps me, something that they have to do and it allows them not to do more than we would really want them to do, even though they would. I mean, they would take two, you know, they do.
Oh, absolutely.
Upper body one, one section and lower body the next section if you let them. So that, I think that's fine. Have we, and I know, John, one question was asked about this, you said you don't want to wade through the, through the weeds too much because there's a long way to go through this process, but have we thought about in terms of, what's going to be the impact on the extracurricular staff, the coaches primarily, in terms of paperwork? I, I think I heard this right, you guys are going to come up with the framework and they basically just have to attest to it?
Right.
So they don't have to come up, they don't have to act like a teacher if they're not already a teacher.
No, and Mike is especially one, because he, he knows so much about his coaching staff as athletic director, he was particularly concerned about that and in terms of turnaround of paperwork and things like, that he already, he already imposes on coaching staff. And he runs a pretty tight ship as an athletic director, so.
Yes.
We want to make, but there's a lot to keep track of, so we appreciate him doing that. And we, we want to make sure that this is manageable for the coaching staff, that it's a streamlined, one-page assessment. We actually have already discussed the idea of a rubric of some type that could be checked off with certain categories that we currently use, say, for example, in MCAS or something, things that are known to people, sort of like the standards-based report card that you saw Scott present, something of that nature, but all on one page, that could just be quickly signed off by a coach. We want to make it manageable.
Okay. And then, the only other question, if we go with the alternative, initially, we will avoid additional staffing, correct?
Initially.
Initially meaning immediately.
For next semester.
This year.
Yeah.
This year.
With the alternative proposal, are we, are we, are we still going to need to add some PE staff even with the alternative? Okay.
Not nearly as many as we, we would have if.
So there will be some increase, but not as much and then we just, excuse me, the elective thing we'll deal with. And then Daryl kind of asked and let it go, but how standard is this in other districts? And if it's not, do we expect it to become more standard?
I'm very curious about this because we, I did a quick poll of the mid-watch league and there's very few schools that do this. Our role does have it featured, we're going to be highlighting this as a centerpiece of our course selection process as an option for students. We're going to put it right out there, not just as sort of like a, something that's holding the, held in the background as an option for students who get into constraints. We want to put this right out in front as, this is part of your course selection, you can do, this, you can go down this road or this road. We think that providing that choice is really, is really helpful for families, so this is very different. I don't think there's a lot of school districts in the state. In fact, that's why we had to go through so much rigmarole with the.
I, I assume that would be the answer, I was just curious how, how far out in front we were. Were we literally like the first, ahead of the.
We're going to find out.
A couple of people running with us.
Yeah, there's a few.
We have a few. Ashland did it two years ago as well. The CPR process, interestingly enough, is going to be driving this throughout the state. 2007, around 2007, when the, the budget crunch hit, throughout the nation, they were looking at electives, including phys ed, and decreasing those credits to make their budgets work. So we're certainly joined with a lot of company in terms of what we were doing and now as the CPR unravels and revisits that section of the law that is subject to interpretation, their interpretation is going to have everybody doing something. I just can't see school districts coming up with the amount of money required to offer phys ed for every student every year.
But, and I think that's, that's clearly probably the primary driver, but I think we've heard enough talk about that that's not the only driver, that offering the scheduling flexibility is the true benefit. Avoiding costs is just, you know, we've got to do what we can when we have to, but, you know, it, I think really, you guys did a great job portraying it as, yeah, we're going to do it for that reason, but we also are realizing that we have a tremendous opportunity here and then in terms of very possibly expanding for a certain percentage of our students, the ability to take more, you know, classroom coursework rather than PE stuff, I think is, is, is something that we should be, like you said, we should be marching this right out in front and people should know, the right families, the right students, just say, hey, I can do this and do all that stuff too, that's what I want to do, you know?
I don't have any of those kids at my house.
You know, I know some other people do, you know?
And we are following the, I guess, best, best practice or next practice. I mean, we're, we're embracing partnerships and that is the way of the future, so I, I feel very, very positive about this and I feel like our students are, are getting a great opportunity to expand, not taking a number of courses during their high school career.
And also just to clarify, it will be on that transcript and, but it will say alternative PE credit with a P for a pass.
Oh, yeah, that, it's a, the letter, it's just, it's a pass.
Where, that currently it's a number.
Right.
Having been around for a while in the profession, I did really struggle with not having one phys ed class being mandatory. And when I really looked at how curriculum has evolved over time, it's more of a life skill approach anyway, that's when I finally tipped on the other side of the fence, but for a while there, it was, it was tough for me to, to come to terms with the fact that we wouldn't require one mandated class during the day, but I feel comfortable now that we're not.
Yeah. Not only, Kelly, are we following best practices in terms of how we're going about accomplishing this, but I think we're also making best practice. I think we'll absolutely see in the next couple of years, John, you can expect a lot of phone calls from principals and other districts saying, hey, I heard you're doing this really cool thing, how are you doing it? What was your process?
And what are your numbers, I feel like is going to be.
Yeah. Especially for.
We'll, we'll be asking that question too. I mean, I'm sure we're going to want to know, you know, exactly how impactful this has been and what the benefit is and.
I'll come back.
Is there a hidden clause that we didn't realize?
And there are, there are other districts that have done similar things in the past, but they haven't been as deliberate about this. Franklin was doing it for a while and, or they're, they might currently be doing it, but I'm sure they have a CPR in the next year or so and when they will realize that they, our process is more involved than theirs because we have to be. They don't know that yet. And then Newton was doing something similar as well until they built their new gigantic, beautiful, $200 million athletic facility. That was, you know, a transitional experience for them. So I think this is the first that I know of where the district is this deliberate about such a strong process and it's not just about the scheduling flexibility or just about the budget, it's about allowing students to explore beyond what we're able to offer in a small school where we offer a lot of things, but we are limited in our capacity. We can't teach dancing or swimming, which they do in some larger districts that are able to afford that and we just can't. To us really allows us to give students so many more options in terms of how they want to get this credit and explore, you know, physical education and health means and skills.
Which it also supports our philosophy of, you know, learning the rules of the, of the sport. Yes, it's important in order for you to play, but really, we want everyone to be physically active. It really doesn't matter what they're doing, so.
Just move.
Fit for life, that's it.
Yes. Kelly, you had mentioned partnerships, I, again, I talked about collaboration, park and rec, there might be some opportunities, you know, to, when you, when you put that front and center, there might be some opportunities to work on Tabana classes or ballroom dancing. I can really see a couple of the Coast Boys taking ballroom dancing. But it might be, it might be some opportunities for some collaborations within the town and also with, you know, some of the partners in the community.
Sure. And I think that's a great idea because if we can do it like that, I think that we retain more control than we would otherwise have by going to a third party that's more difficult to vet there, what they're doing and how they're doing it. I think we can all feel more comfortable, so that's a nice, great suggestion.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion or vote on this tonight or we're just kind of going along the process and the vote will come later when we get a little closer to.
I wasn't sure about the process, so I actually.
Well, I, I think to, to solidify moving forward, I would appreciate a vote to adopt the proposal as presented and also with an instruction to the policy subcommittee to come back with a revised policy at a later date.
Well, he'll get his.
No puzzlers for you next time.
Do you want to get the discussion from the audience before we do a motion or revise a motion? Let's do a motion and then. The motion that we approve the LHS presentation on alternative credit for physical education as presented.
Second.
I'll end it there apparently. Oh, excuse me.
The motion has been made and seconded. I will open it up, but first we'll do it in, yes?
So my, my main comment and concern about the motion as presented there is, I'm still, I would like to see this pilot the use of non-school-based activities as opposed to approving that immediately here, so that we can work out those kinks. You know, the school, the school-based sports programs, they're under the control of this You know, the school-based sports programs, they're under the control of this district. It's an easy transition in terms of the quality control assessment of it. As we start opening it out to the, to other providers, I'd like to have a little bit of time of what those parameters are going to be and how we're going to vet those and maybe pilot a couple of them rather than just opening it up to everybody applying from the external environment.
I think that, given the way that it's presented, the principal will have the ability to go in and look exactly what the program is. And so I feel like if you see something that doesn't look just right, you're not going to, you know, blank approve the credit. And it's done, the requests would come before the credit is earned and granted. So I feel that we have enough control and surely, once you've gone through this a lot, you'll be able to see right off the bat, oh, yes, we know, we've had, we've worked well with this organization in the past, we're expecting, you know, no concerns. But I imagine for the first couple, you'll certainly look more in depth. And I feel that the way that this is structured and how it's not an automatic approval of anything you want to do to get that credit, I feel like gives us the tool we need to comb through and make sure everything is in order before approving that.
You know, I'm actually going to support Daryl on that because, well, I understand what you're saying and in general, I would agree with you. I don't, I'm not overly concerned that these, our staff would make a mistake. We're going pretty far outside the box. There is no real precedent that we can lean on in other districts, as we often do when we set policy. For instance, there's not a lot of general statute out there directly related to this. So I think it is prudent to, and what I would ask is that you amend the motion to say, you know, let's do two motions. One, to allow it to go for in-school athletics the way it's presented. And then a second one towards a pilot. So we will allow them to do it, so then we can codify the outside district activities. Once we, and when I say we, I'm talking about you guys, probably even more than us, are comfortable and you feel like, yeah, that will work, it's working exactly the way we want, we vetted it and they can come back to us and we can just, you know.
Go ahead and say, okay.
I agree.
My intention was to basically compare what Kelly had said. The motion approved the proposal as put forward with the intention to provide policy to basically tighten it up. So if what we want to do is put forward, I mean, I can, we haven't voted on the motion. So we can withdraw the motion at this point because it hasn't been voted on.
What would be nice, Chuck?
Or I can amend it.
To maybe add to whatever motion you decide for implementation date of January 1st, so that we can get started. We don't need a change in credit requirement to get started. So that would allow us to start planning for next semester, which is around the corner.
I get that, but I don't think that addresses Daryl's primary concern, which is to not necessarily let students go outside the district right away. Oh, I mean, we can pilot it, that's okay. So we will let some go if there's an opportunity, but I don't think we want to let everybody that wants to go outside the district go on the first day. I think we would be a little more, am I hitting that right, Daryl?
Some form of review.
But, right, but, but I think what Daryl's asking for is the opportunity for us to get feedback back and then vote yes or no that we're going to let it go outside the district. That we're not going to assume that we're going to let them just because they come back and tell us that, yep, and when everything went great and we're just going to keep moving the way you allowed us to move, that we're going to draw a line in the sand, like do it on a pilot, come back to us, if you tell us the pilot went good and everything's good, then we will vote again to allow it to become a standard practice.
So would you, would you feel comfortable if we had two motions? The first one to.
In-house.
Adopt an in-house program as of January 1st. A second motion to pilot out-of-district athletic programs until June 30th, at which time we'll.
That dresses your concern?
Yes.
I like that, you know?
Because we are granting credit for it and I want to make sure that we have the rigor in place for things that weren't, that's not under our administrative control.
I just have a question on that. I like how that sounds. So that would mean that students would still, between January 1st and June 30th, be able to go to those outside providers, providing that the principal approves, but in terms of a long-term policy, it's not cemented until we then review after June 30th. And then we would decide, do we want to make this a permanent policy or are we done?
Or banning it because it didn't work out anywhere near the way we hoped for, we just got to give up.
And pilot has been intended also that there'd be a couple of things, not like two dozen, three dozen.
Be restricted to.
Well, I'd like to, I would like to use that restriction up to the principal if possible. I mean, he's the one in the trenches, so to speak. We're going to be scrutinizing these programs. We're not just going to have people say, I'd like to do this.
I think the direction is clear and I trust the staff to understand what the intention of the motion is.
I like it.
Hold on, Mike's got one more time.
Well, I think Chuck and I are good. So technically, so we're going to do, one motion is going to be to approve the proposal with respect to in-district athletics. A second motion would be to implement a pilot program for out-of-district placements. And then as part of these motions, are we going to ask the policy review committee to come back to us?
I don't think we need to make that part of the motion. I think that'll just. We will vote on the policies when Daryl's ready to bring them, he'll do that. And that would have happened anyway, even if we decided not to do any of this, we'd have to do that part.
I just wanted to be sure which meeting we'll be getting the Twizzlers.
Probably sometime in January.
I can always add, I can bring Twizzlers in my state of the curriculum. When I come back for that, I can also discuss the results.
Yeah, I like this approach.
No, it makes sense, although the motion was seconded. So I can't withdraw it, so I just recommend that everybody vote it down.
Okay, yeah, so we're going to vote on the first motion and if it fails, we'll make another motion, okay? All those in favor of the motion, vote by saying aye.
Very good listening.
All those opposed, vote no.
I think a motion that we approve the LHS presentation on alternative credits for physical education for in-district athletics. That's one motion.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Before I move it, does anybody, do any of us have any further discussion on that? Does anybody in the audience have any discussion on it, would like to be heard on that?
No.
If you'd vote.
So yes, the answer to the question.
Just a quick question. If you vote for this to start in January, for those students who happen to be freshmen who have already done sports this year, is there still an ability to get the credit?
We wouldn't be implementing in January, right? It'd be effective.
It wouldn't be retroactive.
Is it retroactive to the fall semester?
That came up as a question already, I appreciate you saying that because there were some people concerned about the fall athletic season, having missed it. We would have to create, if we were given the authority tonight, we could create something retroactively with our. I would prefer to do that, only I would limit that, please, to LHS athletics.
Yeah, oh, yeah, for sure.
We could do that, that's manageable retroactively because I could work it out with the athletic director directly, who could attest to the quality of the experience that the student had in the, and the student was punctual, the student participated, completed the sport, the season in the fall.
If the coach could do that.
I would like to do it directly with the athletic director to streamline that now that the season's over.
Yeah, well, because there may be some students who either are desperate for the credit and they're needing to graduate or those who are freshmen who are required to now have that.
Could I just comment just briefly that I think what we're going to need is some procedural flexibility from the school committee on that type of situation to do that?
I would argue that, you know, the motion is broad enough that your implementation is up to you guys.
Thank you.
If you feel like you want to just inform us, we'd love to hear it, but that's.
We'll give you an update because that way we can.
Okay, it was just more.
That'll take care of a lot more freshman questions.
Whether or not there was that flexibility for the principal to do that if necessary.
All right, any other further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion has moved?
Aye.
Excellent, all goes.
We did that right. I'll make a motion that we approve a pilot program for LHS alternative credit for physical education for those programs that are not administered by the district.
Motion's been made.
Until June 30th.
Until June 30th.
Put dates in it?
To review. Subject review after the pilot. Period, which will.
Be June 30th.
Come to an end on June 30th. You just want to get something about it.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion on that particular motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Great discussion, I think we hit a lot of topics there. I think we did a good job, great, great idea breaking that out. I think we're all much more comfortable with that, I think that'll work out for all of us. I'll echo everything you said, big effort, meaningful in a lot of different ways, not, you know, I think we hit them all. I appreciate it and I'm very interested to see how it goes.
Do you want to update at the end of the year?
Thank you.
The only, the only thing we really haven't figured out yet is, excuse me, the time it's going to take to monitor the program. And John and I have had some initial discussions there. Until we have some data to look at, it's going to be hard to ascertain what we're going to need. But I can assure you, we're going to need something. We just don't know how much. And I would imagine it would be clerical more than anything else. Just to bring that to your attention as we're looking forward, there will be hundreds and hundreds of students that take part in this program during the year and to give the program the merit it requires and the monitoring, it's going to take some time.
But I think as we enter budget season, you know, the impacts of the comprehensive review and the other pieces there factor even into the discussions that are coming up over the next couple of weeks here in terms of things that we need to deal with and how we're trying to, you know, provide flexibility and, you know, mitigate costs as necessary to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think that the money that we're talking about initially is hugely material relative to the considerations we already have on the budget.
Yeah. It's just another piece.
Yeah, it's just another little piece there that will, a lot is going to happen and we'll figure it all out. Yeah, and your point is perfectly valid there, okay? All right, superintendent's report? Our November financial statement, I'll turn that over to Steve.
Yep, so you had in your packet a statement through the end of November. I'll ask questions on it, I'll take questions on it. There are a couple of areas of concern in the budget that we're watching and tracking. Tuition reimbursements, ads for the contract with the teachers. We are watching that line, we expect to go over in that line.
How much did we originally budget for that?
So we budgeted $80,000 for this year. We're forecasting somewhere in the, probably the $100,000 expense, so we're looking at a $20,000 overage in that account. There's a couple, there's a, we're also watching the out-of-district tuition line. We had a, an additional placement that we found out today that's going to add to that cost for this year. And we're watching that. We're making, we're trying to look within the budget itself to solve these problems. We may have to go and tap into the school choice a little bit if we can't do it within the budget, but we're looking to make every effort within the budget to manage these costs. But we are watching that and tracking that and I'll keep the school committee informed on those lines.
Question there? The, so the additional placement came today, that's not reflected here yet?
Correct.
That will be reflected in the next one.
Correct.
But that will obviously have a negative budget application.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on?
So actually, just touching on that, so there was a big push last year that we had to spend circuit breaker down to zero there, of which we would normally be tapping into that for this here. How much reserve do we have or is it, there is no reserve at this point under circuit breaker funds for the out-of-district placement?
For this year, for this year, we'll probably, for this year, we will use all of the circuit breaker that we need to spend for this year. Actually, the next slide that I'll show, we'll get into what those balances carry forward it are into this year that we're going to spend. So as far as tapping additional circuit breaker money to help cover any spent overage or anything else, that's probably zero this year, so we'll look at school choice.
The thing to remember is, is that when we had that discussion with the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen, what we ended up agreeing to do was, yes, we will spend it, but we don't have to budget it. And there's a fine line there, but it's an important distinction to understand that even though we didn't budget it, it means we can hold some in reserve and if we have to spend it because we have unexpected costs during the year, we'll do it. And if we still run out, then we would go towards school choice. And that's the benefit of not budgeting at all if we don't have to. And we'll find out if that's going to happen. If we didn't have unexpected expenditures or we didn't have as much as we had held back, then we would spend that money down anyway because we have to, but we can prepay tuitions and there's other ways of using it during the current fiscal year, and that's what we would do. That's the strategy. And we had a late payment from, from circuit breaker that we kind of held back for that purpose. And as we go through the budget subcommittee process, we're anticipating possibly again having it. And one of the things we're going to talk about is, should we budget that now or should we hold it back? And there's, you know, pros and cons to both strategies, but, you know, just, you know, budgeting versus spending. We will spend it.
I just mentioned looking into using school choice money.
Right, because I think what you're saying is we're probably going to use it all and then some.
We, with our tentative spending plan with our increased amount of district placements, in order to make the budget work this year, we're going to try to incur some efficiencies as the year progresses. But we will most likely have to go into school choice funding to make up for the difference. We'll still end up with an okay balance in school choice. But we're going to have to dip into that.
Probably a six-figure issue, probably more like the tens of thousands of dollars type of thing. And hopefully zero. We could get there. We're going to try.
Possible, I'm not holding my breath on that. It could be a.
Unlikely, but maybe.
It'll be as minimized as humanly possible by you guys and then we'll see what happens.
Right, and I don't want to throw out a dollar figure at this point in time. I think we need to still, it's still, it's still November, we still have, you know, a few months of school here to go, so.
Any other questions on that?
All right, so I'll, if I may, I'll just pop in right into the next slide. So the next slide is a chart of the revolving funds that we have at the school department. The top two lines, school choice and circuit breaker are the big ones that we always talk about. So remember, this is the end of June 30th, 2014, so it's the end of last fiscal year. So if you look at the slide, school choice and circuit breaker had a combined balance of $1.4 million. That, that's money that carries forward into FY '15 that is available for FY '15 spending. The $826,000 in circuit breaker funding, that's what we're required by law to spend this year, we will do that. The school choice, we spend as little as we can out of school choice in anticipation of building that balance up to have available for emergencies, so that's what we're trying to do. The rest of the list is some of the, just the activity funds, the kindergarten tuition, the pre-K, the busing, school lunch, the auditorium use, the grants that we, that the district receives. That's on here with how much we receive and how much we've expended out of those revolving funds last year.
And this is just a final audited end-of-the-year report on what's already happened?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. So I'd be glad to answer questions, provide additional information.
I mean, the only question I have is that this is what we expected to see.
This is what we expected to see and we had forecasted. Again, when we talk about.
Pleasant or unpleasant.
Right, usually when we talk about revolving funds in this setting, usually we're focused on school choice and circuit breaker, although those are the big ones. Again, the other, the other funds, busing, for instance, gets used for transportation. Athletics gets used for, you know, athletic expenses, so they get used in that area, so.
I guess, I just have a question. I know that the other revolving funds have to be used specifically on those purposes. And like I see, you know, pre-K tuition, is that at 65K?
Right.
So.
So you have to admit, with pre-K tuition, we have registration back in the spring.
Right.
And we ask people to put a deposit down.
Yeah.
So a lot of that is just a timing issue.
And then it gets spent on pre-K, so it's really not being carried forward, it's not building up.
Correct. Right, and we use that as part of our budget.
Are there any of them that we are holding a reserve, which is fine, there's good reasons to hold reserves? Or are we all spending them down to zero year by year and then putting them back up with, you know, fees or paying for lunches or whatever?
Yeah, so it's not, so we don't, we don't usually spend down to zero every account because there's a timing.
We're not billing anything up to like use for capital purposes. Like if Tiger's Den needed other equipment, would they hold some reserve back and then spend it when they were ready to spend it?
Tiger's Den is one of the exceptions.
Tiger, yeah, right.
So the auditorium, there's 19 grand in the auditorium fund if something needed to be replaced, repaired or whatnot.
Correct, and we, and we use that for upkeep and maintenance of the auditorium, replace carpets when we need to.
My, which I assume the, I knew the answer was yes, but I just wanted to get, go down the line. We're comfortable with the balances that we have, we don't think we have too much. We haven't thought about, gee, maybe it's time to start thinking about spending on something. We're all, all this has been reviewed and we're good with it.
Yes.
It's involved parties have all talked about it and, okay.
We had an issue last year, I believe, because our sports teams were so successful that we spent a little more on busing than we were planning to. that we spent a little more on busing than we were planning to.
Yeah, and it's happening again.
Yeah. Come on, guys, stop winning so much. But it was, it was not a big amount of money because it was for a limited number of games and it's a busing line item, which is not that large anyway relative to the district-wide budget. Are you expecting to see any, is there anything we need to be concerned about or would that, would those small deficits?
In regards to the athletics, no, at this point in time, no. Again, there are some areas that I mentioned, the tuition reimbursement, the special ed tuition line, the trash account. If you remember last year, we greatly exceeded the budget in the trash waste removal. We've negotiated that down a little bit. We'll still be over a little bit in that account, but we can handle that internally from some other accounts, so.
We're going to, we'll be okay, but, you know, just a caution, and I, I don't say this too much, I don't think. As, as we go from year to year, our flexibility seems to diminish more and more. So, two years ago, we wouldn't be concerned about things the same way we are now. So, it is tightening up and, you know, Steve and I are obviously cognizant of that and making sure that we're, we're juggling where we need to to make, make things work.
The student activity fund, where, where is that money? Is that allocated by us or is that paid?
The student activity, that's from the fees that the students pay for, like after school programs.
Clubs and stuff.
Right, and we use that, we use that, those funds to pay the stipends for the teachers that are doing those clubs.
Okay.
No, no, it doesn't cover all of it. So, there's still money from the appropriated budget that covers that, it just helps offset it.
I guess I was just looking at the, the difference between FY13 and FY14 seems like twice as much. Was that just because, was that up in the fee?
In FY13, we had to remove a lot of programming, I believe, at Russell Street.
Correct.
We were able to bring some of that back last year, and I think that's reflected here.
It's possible that some of it, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Excellent. All right, next. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Student staff surveys, as you know, this year is a pilot year for the Department of Education, requiring us to begin the process, excuse me, of implementing, implementing, more correctly, student, that was almost a, I don't know what that was, that wasn't even Canadian.
That was offensive.
We up in the islands somewhere.
I don't know what process you were following.
Whoa, start again. We're, we're looking at, at the process of implementing surveys as we go forward. And we've done a lot of research on something called micro-surveys. That's universal language there. And what's interesting about micro-surveys is they, they are conducted throughout, throughout the year. And the research on this is really interesting. And it makes sense. By, by using micro-surveys to a certain degree, you're getting information that you can look at and react to throughout the year. So, we have a subcommittee struck and they're looking into a number of approaches, but that seems to be the one at this point in time, especially for student surveys. For staff surveys, I've sent a few out to the leadership team to look at. I think there's some validity in a micro survey approach also, but then I'm trying to look at this at a district level as well, and it's always nice to have data to look at. But one of the challenges that we have is because the surveys are tied to ed eval, they're confidential. So, I have to think of a way, along with many other superintendents, to somehow congregate that data in a fashion that will not affect the confidentiality component of the evaluation process. We're trying to deal with that right now. And, you know, the, the micro survey for administration is also good. It certainly, they do that already to a certain extent, but I think we also need a bigger piece. We just haven't figured that out yet. So, I'll be looking for some advice as we move forward on that. This year, if we start the process, I'm going to be content. No, I don't believe in implementing anything until we're confident that we've utilized a thoughtful process and we're happy with the product. So, we are moving forward in that area. DDMS is also coming along. We've actually had some great conversations focusing on student learning and, and looking at achievement gains in a realistic manner. And the implementation of Northwestern Educational Assessments have been very helpful because they have a growth band that we, that they use, and it seems to be applicable to what we're trying to do with non-MCAS subjects as well. So, we've made some good strides. I, I really want to put a plug in here because I hear throughout the state that this has not been smooth. And it's been very smooth within our district. And I credit that to, to the collaborative efforts of, of many involved. And not only that, but the capturing of realizing that we're going to work this through, we're going to work together, and it has to be better for, for students and staff. And I think that philosophy has, has paid off immensely as we tackle some of these challenges. And I'd just like to thank everybody involved in coming to the table and putting our heads together and keeping students at the focus or the forefront of all of our conversations. LAF grants, last item on my agenda. The Littleton Education Foundation has been such a help in providing additional funding for us so teachers can do those special things in their classrooms that they otherwise wouldn't be able to do. They've provided hundreds of thousands of dollars for us for a number of years. We have some grants that they recently approved that are before you this evening, and it does require a vote as per policy because of the total amount. When I read the grants over and give recommendations to the LAF and their recommendations, the LAF makes those decisions on their own. I have to tell you, the caliber of the grants this year were incredible. I was so pleased with the, the grants that were submitted. There were about fifteen thousand dollars worth of grants that were submitted, so they approved about thirty percent at this time. So, again, thanks to the LAF for everything that they do. And at this time, I'd like to request a motion to accept the grants as presented in your package.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none? All those in favor, the motion is moved?
Hi.
All opposed? All right, yes, thank you to the Little Education Fund. We appreciate all of that. All right, anything else on the superintendent's report?
That's it, thank you.
All right. Interested citizens?
Of course, I have to get up.
Yeah, you were gone for a while. I was looking out there, looking at the.
You were hoping I'd come back.
The door opened.
Get your microphone.
Lisa Boone came back.
Oh, I'm only up here for a minute. Lisa Boone. I'm here to say that Littleton CPAC, we have our next, our business meeting on next Tuesday, on the ninth, at seven thirty, and it's going to be at the high school library. And it's important, the last two meetings, we had essentially had presentations and never quite got to our business. So, it's a really important meeting and we're hoping to draw some parents in. Where, the biggest thing we're going to go over is we've been collecting titles for library, the both, or the school libraries as well as our town library that CPAC sponsored. And many of the titles are about learning disabilities, support for parents or staff. And we're looking to gain some input from our members about some of the details on that. So, that's something that's been in progress. And, and we'll give our results for our holiday bazaar next, this Saturday. We're hoping to raise some funds for workshops. So, you know, those are the primary things. But just wanted to let everybody know about our CPAC meeting.
I assume that you have the principals sending information out on that CPAC meeting already?
Uh, yeah, yes, we, oh, that's a good question.
Or if you haven't, I would invite you to ask.
It's normally out, it's been a very busy week, let me tell you. I think I better send that out tonight before I go to bed. So, I apologize, you're right. So, I will, I'll have, they usually, they've been very good about putting them in the weekly newsletter. So, thank you very much, Mike, for reminding me of that because it's tomorrow, isn't it? Okay, it's Thursday already. So, yeah, the holiday bazaar is a big one, too. I've been trying to get all that stuff ready. So, and, and then, done with the CPAC, I just want to say thank you very much, you know, for all the effort going, gone into the physical ed, you know, alternative credits or the additional, I knew the additional credits were coming, but, you know, approving this, this ability because I think it's a fantastic opportunity. I do think this is actually going to be the way that, you know, a lot of districts go. I have been hearing about other districts that are doing it. I don't know if they've done it as formally as we're attempting, you know, or going to do, which I think is important because I think it's a, it'll just really solidify, you know, what that means and, and making sure that it isn't just a write it off, you know, because I do.
But it makes you vulnerable. I mean, some work up front is going to be better than more work down the road because you didn't.
Absolutely. But I am, I am aware that there are other districts who are doing it. But again, I don't know if they just sign a little waiver. But I do think that this is a great opportunity for our town. And I'm hoping that, you know, it'll somehow transition to other beautiful opportunities that will happen in our school district down the road. So, it's, it's a nice way to involve or, or get other students excited that wouldn't be excited about having to fulfill this requirement. So, thank you.
Misses, thank you. All right, diving into the subcommittee reports, PMBC.
Yes. We, I just have one thing that I wanted to bring up. It came up the last two meetings, PMBC, and it had to do with track maintenance. And I guess, I don't know, maybe Steve, if you have anything to chip in. The PMBC just wanted to make sure that track maintenance was something that was on people's radar. And if it hasn't been already talked about, then Mike proposed to have the stakeholders form a meeting to figure out how that's going to be taken care of. Do you know if that's being addressed?
Um, I, I do not.
Okay.
I'd be more than helped.
Yeah, can you maybe?
I'd be glad to coordinate some kind of a meeting or something.
Yeah, I think we should do that, just to make sure, you know, I, my understanding, I wasn't a part of the board, obviously, when that was done, but my understanding is that that was going to be handled by the track organization. But it might be wise for us to just gather them to make sure that that's.
Yep, I can put out a, an email to the president of the LTO and ask for some information and set up a meeting.
Okay, that'd be great.
And we have been involved in minor maintenance. We actually have a filler kit in our office that we've used. Mike Quinn knows how to use it now. So, we've already been involved when we've had to be, but that long-term maintenance is something that really needs to be talked about.
Okay. And that's it?
All right. Budgets Subcommittee, we have two meetings before Christmas. We'll be meeting next Tuesday, twelve nine, at eight thirty at the superintendent's office, as well as twelve twenty-three in the superintendent's office. We have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on the sixteenth, which is, what, two weeks from, or a week from Monday?
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, so it's a, it's a FinCom meeting.
It's a Tuesday, correct.
So, it's the Tuesday, the sixteenth, yep. So, a joint meeting with the FinCom, Board of Selectmen, and the School Committee to continue talking about the budget. We were still striving for, we will be using the budget sub, the two budget subcommittee meetings that we have and our staff time to be prepared on our next meeting, our, our next open meeting here for the School Committee on Thursday, January eighth, with a more detailed budget analysis. We have the preliminary numbers that we put out, and we'll, we'll back that up with some analysis. So, that's what we're striving towards. Anything else on that? Okay, so that's where we're at with that.
I did notice.
Mike, it will be the fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
I did notice an error on the agenda. The next School Committee meeting is January fifteenth.
Fifty.
Sorry.
There was a rough draft out there.
Yeah, you're right.
Way back in March.
Sorry, thank you.
It's the fifteenth.
Yeah, I do that. All right, yeah, so January fifteenth, even better than actually a week.
And Mike, I should have, for budgets sub on Tuesday, I should have the first cross-center pass for us to work.
Perfect, excellent. All right, so we're right on, right on schedule with that. All right, Policy Subcommittee?
Nope.
All right.
Except tasking, I guess.
Exactly. Throw in a pile of him and Daryl. Do we, do we need an executive session tonight?
We don't. I have one other thing that I just want to.
I wasn't going to close you, I was just curious.
Okay. Not that, I don't need an executive session this evening, so if somebody else does, we're good. I've been wanting to, to figure out a way to, on a monthly or a bi-monthly basis, recognize a, a staff member for innovation and best practice and next practice within their classroom. I think it would, it would do a number of things. It would allow us to showcase our staff, and that's something we've talked about a number of times. But what I would really like to do, you know, we've been talking about resources for, for a number of meetings and, and, you know, we've had to really restrict our, the amount of money we put in resources throughout time. So, in addition to the recognition at the School Committee meeting and a lack of recognition, it would be nice, and I'm just throwing this idea out, if we could award some small amount of money for them to buy materials for their classroom as, as part of being recognized, three hundred dollars or five hundred dollars or whatever, if we kept it at eight times a year or whatever, forty-five hundred dollars that was, was a five hundred bucks. And I guess one of the reasons I'm thinking that way is, is it also supports them going that extra mile and, and allows them to further enhance what, what they've purchased in their classroom so that we can encourage that out-of-the-box thinking and innovation. And I, I know it's something new to you as a, as a committee. I've, I certainly did it a number of years ago, but with tighter budget times, something that I certainly feel comfortable bringing up until now. I'm just curious as to your thoughts on that concept.
The first thing that comes to mind is that we all get the, well, as parents, we get memos on the limits that teachers can accept. But this would be from.
This would be district money.
This would be district money, and it would be to be, to be purchased district materials.
But it's, it's a bonus to spend in.
The classroom.
It's not, it doesn't go into their bank account and back into the district.
Right.
That wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Right, it would be for supplies and materials or some classroom enhancement or.
Right.
Something educational for the benefit of the students.
Right.
My only thought on this, and I love the idea of showing support for teachers this way, my only thought on this is if there's a teacher who's growing, and, all of our teachers are growing, but if there, if there are, you know, a couple of shining stars in, in one of the school buildings, and then there is a lot of the other teachers who are trying to get there, my concern is because we haven't fully been able to support those resource needs because of the budget situation that we've been in over the past couple of years, my concern would be that we wouldn't want this to, we don't want to only be providing classroom materials to the teacher, additional classroom support to the teachers who are thriving. We certainly want to be doing that. And I know, we discussed this a little bit, and we also want to make sure that, I know that it's a goal for the district to get back where we were and continue supplying adequate supplies.
We do have a plan in place for, for that other component. And when we, when we bring new staff on, we, we work very closely with them. And if, if there's a, a resource requirement, we find out a way to make, make it work. So, I mean, I said, I'm glad you brought that up because it is, it is something that we need to, to be aware of.
I'm, I guess I'm split on it. I love the idea of being able to support teachers in this way, especially some of the teachers who are really doing amazing things in their classrooms. At the same time, my thought is if we're going to have the forty-five hundred dollars, it sounds like a little bit of money relative to our budget, but every little bit counts. And we all know, you know, whether it's the tissue boxes or whatever the supplies might be, that's something that we're constantly hearing about, that the PTA is hearing about. I don't have, I don't have the answer for it, but it's a question that, that I need to mull over. Just how do we balance it?
I think I agree with Alex. I, sorry.
Okay.
I think I agree with Alex. I love the idea. I'm a huge supporter. I, I think that our teachers are, have so much potential that they don't get to use without those sort of extra funds. I agree with Alex that if, if we have forty-five hundred dollars and we agree that we can, you know, allocate to something like this, I think maybe we should determine that and then figure out, have a broader conversation if that's the, not the best way, but the way that we all choose to go forward with it. Ideally, I wish, you know, I hope we can, I hope we can do that, I guess is my answer. I hope that we find that as we move forward with the budget, that that's the type of thing that we have money down, okay.
No, I, I, yeah, I too, torn a little bit. The, I've seen in other districts where they do, you know, monthly teacher recognition, they did it in Shova Tech. I just wasn't sure about the, the other element that, that you brought into it there. So, I don't know how common of a practice that is in, in this area.
It's not at this point in time.
Right.
It's not.
I philosophically, I love it. I think it's great. I think consenting people, rewarding people for, I mean, we, we can say. people for, I mean, we can say it on camera, you know, thank you for the reference, and, you know, tell the, tell the admin staff to go back and say thank you. We've seen them around town or at school events. But this is something that's, it's a carrot and a stick, right? Put the carrot out there, we got a lot of teachers that are doing a lot of great things, but, you know, maybe they'll go that little extra in order to, a, get the recognition, but there's a little bit of financial incentive, although it's not going into their pocketbook, in some ways it is, because they're not having to spend that money out of pocket that they, they're probably going to spend anyway, on their classroom. So, it's, I think it's a great incentive and a great way to, to get the cream, to rush to the top. And there's a lot of talented teachers in that district, and they're all doing a great job, and little competition is healthy. I like the idea.
Yeah, I'll echo that, I think that, you know, I think there's enough collaboration in the buildings, and the money is so small in each of its, each of the distributions, that we have enough respect for our teachers that they're not going to go all, you know, willy-nilly about it because somebody got something that I didn't get, especially when it's clearly demarcated about, well, you could have got it, you can get it, go get it, go get it, we'd love to give it to you next time. I think they would actually embrace that. And I don't think you hear anybody say no, I think maybe Chuck and I are a little more enthusiastic out of the gate, and these guys have legitimate concerns. So, I would say if you want to pursue it and bring it back in with a little bit more detail about how you would do it, and as long as you're, you've heard some of the concerns, and if we can address those, and we can have a more robust discussion about it, we'll be thinking about it as well, and get our, you know, our thoughts around it and our philosophies around it, and we can think about, you know, how enthusiastic we are about it, and if we are, and we decide to move forward. But I think you're right, I think we all agree that the idea of recognizing them in a more formal manner is absolutely, that's got, that should happen, we all want that to happen, and that's a terrific idea, especially relative to, you know, the way we're innovating and, you know, using next practice type stuff. I think means a lot to the audience in our constituency, if they can hear that more often, I think that's great, especially people who don't have kids in the building. You know, we see, a lot of us see it right away, more immediately than other people get an opportunity to, so I think that's great, if we can highlight that, that's awesome.
And this is no way, in no way meant to give preferential treatment, but, I mean, boy, we've had many conversations even before my time at this table about merit pay. This is, this is a far stretch from merit, certainly far more equitable and far more impactful to a certain degree. And the $500 came up from, there was a study done a number of years ago, and probably 10 years ago now, and the average teacher spends between $500 and $700 a month pocket a year, and that's where the number came from.
Does that make sense?
Is actually a tax write-off on the tax movement?
All right, so anyway, thank you, I just wanted to fill that by, and I'll give it some more thought.
All right. Anything else before we get ready to close out? All right. How much more junk? No, not yet. Football game Saturday, 9:00 AM, Holiday Bazaar all day at the middle school.
Till 3:00.
Sorry, that, starting early in the morning till 3:00.
Musical.
I know, I know, I know, I know you have been, but it, you know, some people that joined the audience late, and me, want to hear it again. And just a reminder that we will not be back in open session till after the holiday break, January 15th, winter break, December 24th to January 2nd, for all the school families. And we, oh yeah, the play, there's a play at the high school Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
If you gotta repeat everything.
I took what he talked about.
If you gotta repeat stuff, repeat everything.
The Mystery of Edwin Drood.
And the Tree Lighting on Sunset.
Yeah, truly, I'm, it's a great time of year, go out and enjoy the community, multiple opportunities this weekend, especially in this move through the season, and we'll all get back together again after the holidays.
Wouldn't that be the open heart of the $500?
Haven't figured that out yet, but, you know, it'll be out on social media when it happens. All right, anything else? I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all. Merry Christmas.